Zebulon Board of Commissioners Work Session 421, 2022. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second, all in favor? Motion passed. We will recognize the Town Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Board. Tonight, we bring for to the Board for discussion four topics. We'll talk tonight about Wake County retention incentives. We will follow up on the final community needs assessment focusing on the Administration Department. We'll give you a preview of your FY23 budget. And we'll continue the conversation that the Board expressed some interest in at the last meeting, talking about the bond referendum. So to kick off on the first topic regarding the Wake County retention incentives, Wake County has proposed using a portion of their American Rescue Plan funds as retention incentives for their employees. The intent incentives are one part of Wake County's multi-pronged effort to retain their talented workforce in a tight and competitive labor market. Wake County is extending the offer to firefighters of the municipal departments with whom they partner through a cost-share agreement, Zebulon Fire Department being one of those departments. Ashley Jacobs, Wake County Deputy Manager, is here with us tonight and will present the Board with additional background and rationale on the retention program and Zebulon's portion to financially accept the offer to support the program within the Fire Department. Staff will also provide the cost of mirroring Wake County's program and extending these incentives to all Zebulon employees. And with that, Ashley, welcome to Zebulon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor York and Board of Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about Wake County's retention efforts. Now, we believe that our employees are our greatest asset. We can't achieve our goals without our incredible staff. They are driven, they are dedicated, and they have a passion for serving their community every single day. There is no greater example of this than their service during the COVID-19 pandemic. But we've been facing many challenges with keeping our talented employees. They are tired and struggling with burnout of the highest order. We are facing great resignation and historic turnover. Employees are leaving for higher wages and lighter workloads, and we are all coping with rising inflation and a high cost of housing. The county has the highest turnover rate we've seen in 17 years at over 16%, and some of our departments have vacancy rates hovering around the 20% mark. We have key positions remaining vacant, which creates strain and stress on our employees and our budget. In calendar year 2021, turnover cost the county $76 million. Our average vacancy is 6.63 months, and 25% of firefighters across the county stay in their positions for less than three years. Their reasons for leaving are to climb the career ladder, for better pay, to go to more active stations, or in some cases, they leave the profession altogether. Inflation in the Southeast exceeds national trends. We have a strong economy here, but the rising cost of poor household goods such as food, gas, and clothing are placing a strain on households. We also have a rising number of cost burden rental households. Over 65,000 households in Wake County pay more than 30% of their income for rental housing. Both the public and private sectors nationwide have been hit hard by the great resignation, and it's difficult to accomplish even the basic day-to-day responsibilities when you're short one-fifth of your team. To respond, we have to do two things. We must ramp up our recruitment efforts to fill the vacancies, and we must focus on retaining our talented workforce in the tight labor market. To show our employees how much we value and appreciate their hard work, we are giving retention incentives. Employees will receive a specific allotment based on their salary in March, August, and December if they continue to work for the county. Here's how the retention incentives will work for the employees, for employees hired by February 1st of this year. Employees earning less than $60,000 a year will receive a total of $4,000. Employees earning between $60,000 and $99,999 a year will receive $3,750. And employees earning $100,000 or more will receive $3,000. Those who are hired after February 1st, who have not already received a multi-year sign-on bonus, will receive a retention incentive of $1,000 in December. And again, the source of funding for this incentive pay is American Rescue Plan funds. This is just one part of our multi-pronged approach to recruitment and retention. We are also recommending a cost of living adjustment in the fiscal year 2023 budget, providing sign-on and referral bonuses for certain positions that have been hard to fill, offering a living wage, providing performance pay, conducting a compression study, and making changes to our market bands. The county is extending this incentive pay to all of our cost-share fire departments. Town of Zebulon has 11 fire employees who earn less than $60,000, four employees who earn between $60,000 and $99, excuse me, $99,999, and one employee who earns $100,000 or more. The total cost for these employees would be $77,165. With the cost share, Wake County would pay $38,828, and the town would pay $46,337. We believe this investment is critical to retaining our staff and continuing to provide services at the high level our residents expect, and we are confident that this measure will be effective. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Board? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go back one slide. This calculation is, we've had some employees whose salaries have changed, so we will bring you back a more precise number when we present the budget. We will also present information at the budget about if you wanted to extend this program to all employees. Roughly, I will tell you right now, it would be $300,000 to $350,000 to extend it to all employees. But again, we'll bring that, present that information to you when we present the budget.
So let me understand this correctly. This would not be part of the cost share? You're just asking the town to give a bonus to employees?
That would be an option. That would be information we would present to the Board for consideration.
That's $300,000 that you're talking about, though?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Per North Carolina general statutes, Town Manager is responsible for recommending an annual budget and capital program to the Board of Commissioners. This year, we've hosted or presented a series of community needs assessment presentations as a means to prepare the Commissioners for the FY23 operating capital budget. Tonight's presentation focusing on the Administration Department is the last of those presentations. The presentations that you've received to date has focused on the capacity and capability needs of the town to serve its citizens. And while there are certainly capacity needs within the Administration Department, I wanted to focus tonight on the capability needs. Capability needs, once again, reflect the increase in technical skills or different skill sets that currently are not available within the town. So we will talk about some things that have already been presented to put a finer detail on it. One presentation that you heard when Public Works presented was the need for technical engineering skills, give you a more nuanced or fuller explanation behind this request. We are currently falling behind in a couple of areas. One is within our capital project management, as far as taking projects through the design process. It's taking longer, but probably more importantly, we are wholly reliant, and I mean wholly reliant upon engineering consultants to advance the work. The more pressing issue related to the engineering expertise has to do with the development plan review, particularly when it comes to stormwater review. We are struggling to keep up with the technical requirements of that, to provide timely reviews. But also, we are required per our permit with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to oversee aspects of our stormwater system, specifically reporting, maintenance, inspections. And so we need the, we need the expertise in-house, the engineering expertise in-house to oversee that program as well. The other thing, as a repeat, is economic development. You heard this in the planning presentation. Again, to put a finer or more nuanced and fuller explanation behind this, this would help in workload. So right now, the planning director is serving in two roles. Operationally, that's a tough thing to do when you are trying to entice businesses to come, and then also you have to be the regulator of those businesses. But also, from a workload management, that's a very difficult thing to manage a department and also serve as the economic development director. So there are some workload improvements that we would gain by having an economic developer in-house. Probably more important than that, however, is the opportunities that we're missing, the opportunities to move things forward. As you saw in your mini-retreat out to the industrial park, there's a lot of opportunity for growth out there. There's companies that are there, that are here, they're growing, they want to expand, and there's the opportunity to bring other like-minded, like-type communities, I mean, businesses into our community. And so there's an opportunity cost with bringing on an economic developer as well. What I'm going to focus on specifically tonight is the training needs and the public information needs, as well as retention. So this follows a little bit on what Ms. Jacobs was referring to earlier. As far as the training, yes, we are a growing country. We're diversifying, the demographics are changing, and so we, as a country, are talking more about diversity, equity, and inclusion. But this is a topic that is long overdue. We will have to discuss this as our community grows and diversifies, not only from the diversification that comes about from growth that's coming into the community, but also the suppressed demographic that has been here within this community that wants and needs to participate more. So we need to do more in regard to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Diversity, equity, inclusion is more than just race. We are now in a workforce where we have four generations within our workforce. So we have baby boomer leadership with Generation Z workers coming into our workforce, very different mindsets, very different motivations. And so we need to diversify our approaches to work with regard to the different generations that are coming into our workforce. You've heard from, most notably from the Police Department, and with some respect, the Fire Department, about the career ladder. We're going to need to introduce more soft-skill training for those employees who look to develop their careers with more skill sets and training related to supervisory and management needs. And we need to get into a better habit of just offering our routine training that should be a basic requirement that we constantly revisit and stay sharp on, examples being harassment and bullying. With regard to the Public Information Officer, like many things that we've done around here, we've done it by committee. We've done a very notable and noble job, but we're not being consistent, and we're, again, we're missing opportunities, particularly with a brand when it gets adopted. We're going to have to be consistent on the use of that brand. We're going to have to be more proactive in pushing out press releases, meaning our story, because of the lack of local reporting and newspapers and traditional newspapers in our community. And with website upgrade coming on, as well as our use of social media, those need to be coordinated and have oversight as well. Talk a little bit about retention. So you've heard from different departments about how we are having turnover issues, how to retain employees in different departments. You've heard from different directors, but you haven't heard the story about the directors themselves. That's my job. They would not talk about that. I wouldn't ask them to talk about it. But just to give you some examples of things that are going on. So this chart before you, this lists the grades of different director-level positions. So from grade level 17 all the way up to, is that way through? Thank you. And I don't have the salary numbers down on the bottom axis intentionally, because I'm just trying to demonstrate a point. So when you have different directors come onboard, and they come onboard at different grade levels, and those grade levels that they come onboard at reflect the responsibilities and the requirements of their job. They come in at different ranges within those grades, and they come in based upon their experience, and they progress along those grades based upon their experience and their merit with the town. And then if they have been here for a long time, as some of them have, and we have not recruited externally because we haven't needed to for a long time, but then as we grow, we have to bring people in, that's where the market starts to reveal where they are as far as the competitiveness on their pay. So one example is, if you look down there at the grade 18, we had to hire a mid-management position, that red line better defines it. So you bring on a mid-management person, and they're getting paid more than one of our department directors. And so that creates a market issue. So bringing someone on that's at a lower level at a higher rate than one of our department directors shows that we've got a market condition. This gets further illustrated when we bring on another mid-management position, and we reveal yet another market condition. And then when you look closer, you reveal that some positions have both a market and a compression issue. An employee with 25 years of experience should be further along the grade than they are right now. So we've got, because of the marketplace becoming so competitive, because we are having to bring on new people from outside, they are revealing market and compression issues within our department ranks, much like we're seeing within the frontline ranks of the different departments that you've already heard about. Again, as we have shared with other departments, we're giving you some foreshadowing of what the Town of 18,000 will look like. So I shared with you at the retreat last week, one of my concerns about with the Town of Zebulon was that there was full agreement on all issues. The second concern I had was that there was not a human resources department. So we've made a lot of progress. We've added human resources to the Town Clerk position. We have supported that position by having a deputy clerk and an HR assistant, but the day is going to come where we're going to have to fully transition both human resources and information technology to independent departments. And so this is foreshadowing of what that human resources department would look like with HR technicians not only handling a bigger workforce, but also specialized, in some communities, you'll have HR technicians focused on specific departments rather than all departments. And then while we do have an information technology specialist, the day is going to come where that will have to be motivated to a director level to oversee our needs regarding information technology. So that's the Town of 18,000, as well as the needs assessment within the Administration Department. Before we transition to the next presentation, I'll take any questions if there are any Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the third topic, the FY23 budget preview. This presentation provides the Board with expected revenue projections for the coming fiscal year and compares them with summation of all community needs assessment requests presented to date. And when I say presented to date, these numbers that you're going to see tonight do not include the PIO or the retention information that I've just shared with you just now. The Board will also receive information about available fund balance, the adequacy of the current tax rate to support the existing services, and the revenue generated from increasing the tax rate. And with that, I'll recognize Finance Director Bobby Fitz.
Thank you, Joe. As Joe mentioned, we're going to give a brief primer of what you'll see in about a week and a half when we present the FY23 budget. First of all, we're going to take a look at the revenue projections for the upcoming year, and also look at the current year FY22 adopted budget to have a little comparison from this year to next. For the property tax revenue, this current year is about 7.7 million, with next year projected about 8.77 million. That's including about a nine-and-a-half percent growth in real property and about 6.9 total, total value. Sales tax, this year is about 1.9 million, I have projected at, just shy of 2.5 million for FY23. Restricted intergovernmental revenues such as Wake County Fire cost share, PEG media money, power bill, et cetera, this year is 725,000, next year about 1.1 million. For sales and service, 840,000 for '22, about 736 for '23. Interest rates remain pretty low, so our investments are not earning a whole lot. This year, we have a budget of 3,500, and next year, about the same, about 3,000. For expenditure projections, this current year, we're just talking operating, we adopted a budget for about 10.1 million. The FY23 request to date, there's about 13, whatever, 13 million. Talk a little bit about the tax rate. I mentioned we had a total of 6.9% growth from '22 to '23. Our current tax-based value is currently sitting at about 1.6 billion. That split is, you've heard it before, it's kind of shifting a little bit. It was more heavy commercial than residential, and it's shifting slowly the other way. This current year is about a 60-40 commercial-residential split, whereas a couple of years ago, it was like 68-32. So we're shifting there. And for real property, it's whatever, billion, and personal property, that being registered vehicles that all of us drive, and business personal property as well at local industries. That's 586 million. With that tax-based value of 1.6 billion, what a penny on the tax rate will generate is about 160,000. Stop me if you have any questions along the way. I forgot to mention.
What was the logic or assumptions on the sales and service declining?
That was the stormwater fee elimination.
Yeah, that's the sole factor?
That was rolled into tax rate.
Can you enlighten me a little bit on the type of investments? Just kind of curious on that.
We pretty much have everything sitting in our local bank or North Carolina Capital Management Trust, which is about, there's, we're limited on what we can do. We can't just invest in anything that you and I personally could do. It's safe, but low risk, low reward somewhat compared to what you and I could do on our own. But that's the majority of it sitting in Capital Management Trust, which is the, is doing better than what our bank is doing right now. Talk a little about revenue neutral. FY21, January 1st, 2020 was the last revaluation date. That was reflected in the FY21 budget. That revenue neutral rate that was adopted was 54.32 cents. That was the revenue neutral rate. The rate that was adopted for FY21 was 55 cents. As I mentioned, it was incorporated in the stormwater fee, was the difference between the neutral and what we adopted. Based on what rebates were done, things like that, based on appeals, that, if you kind of recalculated, it should have been about 55.7.
But this was for FY21, not '22? Okay.
So about a 1.4 cent difference. Just to give a little update on our fund balance and what's available for this upcoming budget to appropriate, at June 30, 2021, there was about 11.4 million in unrestricted fund balance. With FY22, not reserve, but surplus, we estimate about 12.9 million dollars available of unrestricted fund balance at June 30 of this year. So how much that can be used toward the FY23 budget, based on the town policy of 50% of expenditures has been maintained, that would be allowing about 4.4 million to use. And based on the credit rating requirement, which is 30% of operating revenues, that allows about 4.2 million in available fund balance.
Can I ask a question, please? So the 4.2 million, that would be to maintain our current credit rating, that would be the amount that we could spend out of the fund balance?
That, that's not the sole metric, but to get the highest score for the fund balance metric requires 30%
Okay.
of operating revenues. So it's a little bit, it's more than a little bit, it's a lot different from our policy to that as far as what it's looking at. But that would give us the maximum score.
Okay, thank you.
But that wasn't necessary, it's not the only factor. It's a 10% factor of our score. But to get the highest score, we're at the highest amount we can get, and to keep that, we'd have to use not more than 4.2.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the budget preview yet? Any other questions on the budget preview yet? As Joe mentioned, we've talked a couple of past work sessions about the bond referendum and some of the possible projects and what it would mean to the tax rate in the upcoming year should that happen. So, we're going to, we can have a few calls put together to kind of share what they are and what that will do to the tax rate should we go this route. So, we have, we kind of divide up into three categories, so I'm going to talk a little bit about those three categories. We have roads. I'm going to talk about some of the road projects and calls. Some of these, a lot of these you've seen before, but just kind of put some price tags on them and what they will do to the tax rate. Some park projects, what they call, and then some miscellaneous facility projects around And stop me if you have any questions. Hopefully, I or somebody else here can answer if there's any specific questions on some of these projects. First, the road projects, they're total about ten point five million. That would equate to about five point two cents on the tax rate. Intersections, one point five million. These are Green Pace and North Rendell, Shepherd School and Old Bond, and Procter and Pierce's.
Can I ask you, the, after the project costs, when it says ten point five million, if we were, what this five point two percent tax rate, that would be what the bond adjustment would be to cover the ten point five million?
Right.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly.
Yeah. The total road projects are ten and a half million, and that would equate to about five point two cents on the tax rate to cover the debt service on just the. The widening projects, being North Rendell and Old Bond from Shepherd School to Parks Village, that's total about nine million. Then, with the adoption of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, has revealed the projects needed or recommended. They total about fifty-nine point four million, which would equate to twenty-nine point four cents on the tax rate. You'll see on, I think Lisa just handed it out, the couple tidbits from the Master Plan on page one seventy-eight. It describes the existing projects, and they would total about thirteen million. And the proposed new on page one seventy-nine totaled about forty-six point four million. But the grand total of the whole, the total of those two, fifty-nine million, like I said, were involved with twenty-nine point four cent tax increase. Moving on to facility renovations, construction, upgrades, et cetera. They total about nine million. The majority of that, of course, being the fire and EMS building, is about six million. Public Works Storage Facility renovation and expansion, that's about two million. And then, some miscellaneous renovations and restoration here at Town Hall and the police station, total about one million. And that nine million dollar project cost would equate to about four and a half cents on the tax rate.
When you say miscellaneous, I'm just kind of curious about that. Can you enlighten me a little bit on that for the town? Paul?
Bathroom renovations and renovations to accommodate growing staff, and then, that's about five hundred thousand, and then the other five hundred thousand is window replacement, exterior tuck pointing, and site lighting improvements here at this facility. That's really it. If my house has any questions, we're here to take them.
Yeah, so, under the Parks and Rec bond projects, and maybe you're not the one to answer this, maybe Sheila is, we've been given two numbers, but we've just been given one tax rate increase, and that would be for the whole shebang, including funding all of the Play Zebulon Parks and Rec Master Plan, which honestly, I think that that's a bit ambitious, so I'd like to get a little bit of insight from Sheila if I could.
So, I think the important thing to know is that the board has the opportunity to look at the different projects that are available for a bond referendum. So, if you wanted to do it all, which we recognize as unrealistic, that is what the total cost of the plan is. So, this is an opportunity for the board to work together to identify what projects within the plan would be a priority to go after a bond for. So, it's not necessarily saying we want to go after this full amount for the bond, because we agree with you. And our plan even, our plan doesn't recommend going for a full bond for all of this, but it's just showing you what the total cost of projects would be from a tax perspective, from a bond rate. So, this is your opportunity to take a look at these projects and provide some feedback.
Do you have a hierarchy or some kind of tiered structure as to what projects you think are more emergent than others?
So, the Master Plan, let me give you a page number, but it does go through like year to year, online projects could be done. So, I wouldn't say that there's necessarily a hierarchy because they all are important and they all have significant need. Some of them have a, are going to require a lot more of resources. So, that's going to be like a full renovation of community park. Greenway implementation is going to be expensive and a big undertaking. Anything you're going to do out there around Five County Stadium, if you're going to do that multi-use facility and a pool and all of that, those are projects that I would say would be better for a bond. But I would recommend looking through the Master Plan. Let me give you a page number so that you have an opportunity. It starts on page two fourteen, and it goes through the next ten years on, and it recommends projects for each of those years.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Not a problem. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other about anything that I've shared, budget or bond topics?
Now, I have a question for Chris Ray.
Oh, Chris is coming up. So, these are actual estimates that we already have, or these are kind of guesstimates, what we're doing? We already have the final, kind of like?
On all of that?
Correct, the numbers.
Those are estimates to the best of our, the current state of the construction economy and everything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Subject will change, obviously.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's a quick question. Sorry to make you walk all the way, all the way up. As part of the Public Works Storage Renovation Expansion, does that include, that doesn't include the unreleased funds? That's just, this is in addition to?
I would have to refer that to Bobby. I actually submitted that. When I'd be asked, did we submit the building expansion, the yard maintenance expansion, and the new building now? Does, did you include the funds that were, that have been held, or, I don't know, I guess we hit, the three fifty, yes, sir? Are your numbers?
Yes, included.
In here?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
So, this is all the information that we need to look at as we prepare for the bond, how we choose and discuss all these projects.
Right.
Now, are we, when do they propose to do the bond? When do we think, you know, some have said November, this coming November, but that's not far away.
Yeah, well, that's kind of the thing. If we want to do it this November, we need to get on the ball and start the process basically in May as far as doing the intent to, you know, issue bonds and things like that, start the process with the LGC and the application. But if it's something we want to do in November, we need to start that.
No.
Pretty much right away. But if it's not, then it's, if it's something, need more time to mull over and all that, we probably, we couldn't get on November of this year.
But we could plan for maybe the spring of next.
Could. Or the following November.
If the board, if the board wants to have a bond referendum on the November ballot, they need to adopt a notice of intent at their May regular meeting. And so, we would need direction from the board, like a vote directing us to prepare a notice of intent, so we could put that on your agenda. If you want to take more time, you don't need to do anything. We'll just continue this conversation to allow you the time to win others down and give you the opportunity to talk and discuss what's your highest priority projects.
So, you got two questions. Do you want to do a bond? And if so, how much?
Well, I think you've got to sit down and discuss all this before we can decide how much, and I think this coming November is unrealistic. I think we need to have some more time in order to discuss all of this.
The general consensus? I'll take, I'll take what he says. Kind of rushing a little bit for November for me.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I was stating that I agree with Commissioner Clark. It seems a little rushed for November for me, my perspective.
If you do delay it, you may push off that fire station another year, or maybe two
I think, I don't think it will affect the fire station schedule. We're going to need a year. So, Commissioner Miles brought up, is this a guesstimate? Is this an estimate? This is like more guesstimate than estimate right now, an example being the fire station. We will have a better idea of the construction cost of the fire station once we've completed the design. So, we need a year anyway. I don't think pushing the bond referendum will delay the construction of the, of the fire station.
In addition, is the six million for the fire station, that's Zebulon's portion, or that's the total? My understanding was it was that that would be Zebulon's portion of it?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor, that concludes staff's reports unless there's any other questions.
Any more questions, comments from the board?
Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Moving second. All in favor?
I guess.
Motion pass.
Thank you.